Alright folks, may I have your attention? Good evening. My name is Jay Ref, I'm the moderator, and I'm calling the meeting to order. A couple things we're gonna do first. First, please join me in doing the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll do the National Anthem after that.
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dark, 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 what so proudly we have... ...last gleaming whose broad stripes and bright... ...ever last fight, o'er the ramparts we watched, were so ghastly streaming? And the rugged red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Okay, folks. Everybody? John! Alright. So, bring the meeting to order. A few ground rules. So the first thing we're gonna do, this year's a little different. The first two articles, those are bond issues, those have to be by ballot. So we're gonna go through those first. On both Article 2 and 3, those articles have to stay open an hour. So what we're gonna do, when people come up, let them come down, come through, you'll vote. We're gonna take the boxes, we're gonna hold the boxes with the ballots in them for an hour. And then we'll count those, and those have to pass by a three-fifths vote. And when you come down to vote, bring your voter card, okay? So that's gonna be a little different, and then we'll get into the normal voting on the warrants, where I will read the warrant articles. Well, I'll ask for a motion in a second. Once the motion and second are there, then we'll open up the floor to discussion. I do know that there are some folks that may want to have some of the warrants done by secret ballot tonight. Just a reminder, that if you wanna have that done, I need written statements from at least five citizens from the town of Lancaster, and I need to have those submitted to me before voice voting starts. So, we'll take each warrant as it goes. One of the first things, though, we're gonna do is we have several town employees who are not citizens of Lancaster, and we need to vote to allow them to speak tonight. We're gonna do four of them together, as one vote. So I'm gonna make a motion that we allow Jessica Seer, the town manager, Timmy Billado, water sewer supervisor, Robin Irving, the land use coordinator, John Woodward, the chief, to be able to speak tonight. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, allow them to speak. Any opposed? Okay. Before we get too far, our new town manager, Jessica Seer, does wanna say a few words, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jessica Seer, I'm your new town manager. My first visit to Lancaster was during the solar eclipse, and then the storms in July washed me to this community. It's a pleasure to be here. I know that everybody during the July flooding really came together, and it showed the spirit of Lancaster, and I appreciate the neighbors working together. I think that Lancaster's a great place to live, it's a great place to work, and it's a model for engaged citizenry. So I thank all of you for coming tonight. I know that together we're going to keep this town moving forward, and I wanna just thank you again for showing up, and to all the community members who volunteer for the town. It's amazing that you spent your time for this community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, first thing, I got Article 2, I'm gonna read it, get it moved and seconded, and then we'll vote, okay? Or we'll have discussion and then vote. So Article 2 is the Summer Street Project, the North End. To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of $3,849,325 for the purpose of reconstructing the North End of Summer Street, making improvements to the water system, sewer system, and drainage system, with said funds to be raised by the issuance of bonds or notes in the amount of $769,865. Under and in compliance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act, NHA 33:1, SEC, as amended and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and determine the date, term of payment, and rate of interest thereon. Further, take such other actions as may be necessary to effectuate the issuance, negotiation, sale, and delivery of such bonds or notes, as shall be in the best interest of the town, and $3,079,460... It's 300...excuse me. to come from a congressionally-directed spending Environment Interior Environmental Protection Agency grant, and Northern Border Regional Commission NBRC grant. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation for RSA 32:7, Paragraph 6, and will not lapse until the project is completed or December 31st, 2030, whichever is sooner. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article 2.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, who wants to talk about this one?
I'll speak on it. So this is the improvement of the Northern End of Summer Street. As Jay said, the water sewer, drainage, roadway, and a sidewalk. We did get congressional money. It's a large sum, it's one of the grants that Robin applied for. We feel that we're very fortunate to get it, and we're looking for 20% matching funds. Any questions?
Okay, do we have any questions on Article 2? Well, this year we have microphones in each corner. When you come up, please introduce yourselves and say where you're from.
My name is Rob Christie. My name is Rob Christie. I live at 155 Mount Prospect Road.
In here.
Big Park.
In here.
Did you push the button?
It's on, the mic's on. No, no.
Hello? My name is Rob Christie. I live at 155 Mount Prospect Road, and my question is, the tax impact is described as being 19 cents. Is that every year for the duration of the bond?
The bond won't start until we secure it, as far as payment.
So that would be 15 years at 19 cents?
That's what it's looking like, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so now we're gonna vote by ballot, and so we need an orderly... Send it over here to the corner, and then we'll come around. Vote.
That's the front?
Oh, that corner, they told me over here. Can you go over to this corner? Come down, follow the line, and we come through. Okay, folks. Alright, so that was so much fun, we're gonna do that again with Article 3. So, Article 3 is a water storage tank. To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of $3,314,699 for the purpose of adding a water storage tank at the water plant intake to help with pressure and volume to those users fed directly from the intake, with said funds to be raised by the issuance of bonds or notes in the amount of $1,896,999, under and in compliance with the provisions of Municipal Finance Act, NHA 33: SEC, as amended and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and determine the date, term of payment, and rate of interest thereon. Further, take such other actions as may be necessary to effect the issuance, negotiation, sale, and delivery of such bonds or notes, as shall be in the best interest of the town, and $1,505,000 to come from a Northern Border Regional Commission and NBRC grant, and Economic Development Administration, EDA, grant, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, expend unanticipated money from the state, federal, or other governmental unit, or a private source which becomes available pursuant to RSA 33:95-B for the same or similar purposes of this article. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation for RSA 32:7, Paragraph 6, and will not lapse until the project is completed or until December 31st, 2030, whichever is sooner. Do I have a motion?
I move Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second Article 3.
Alright, who wants to explain this one?
I get to do that again. This project was started back in 2020. We've also partnered with Week's Medical Center, that is contributing $200,000 to the project. We...Robin, again, was able to secure some grants from EDA in the NBRC grant, for a total of $800,000. The USDA Royal Development Direct Loan in Grant for $1,089,699. And also a US Direct Loan in Grant, the bond...with a low interest rate, and some forgiveness. The bond is only for $505,000. It's a 25-year bond, and the tax impact would be 44 cents. Any questions?
Okay, do we have any questions in the comments on Article 3? Sir?
We did this...
A name, sir?
Excuse me. William Ram, 30th Mountain Boulevard, East Street. My thing with this, the biggest benefactor for this is gonna be the hospital. Their expansion and stuff has been such that, it's my understanding from the last time we tried this, the water suppression movement and stuff doesn't always have sufficient pressure and stuff. $200,000 may seem like a generous gift, but the almost $4 million that it's gonna take to build this project should take the hospital over 100 years to pay back at their present tax rate. As a business owner, I'm sure as hell I'm not gonna get that kind of consideration when I need a roof on my garage or something. So like I said, I have a problem with this being, what I consider very one-sided for the hospital. And at this time, I don't have anything further, unless something comes up, I'll be mad.
Okay? Okay, do we have any other comments, concerns, questions? Rob?
I've got, I've got two mics now, how about that stereo? My name is Rob Christie. I live at 155 Mount Prospect Road in Lancaster, and I have a couple of questions. You just described the bond as being about $500,000, but somewhere on the paper it says $2,400,000, and I'm not sure...which one is it?
The bond may be only $505,000, but yet it could go...
Yeah, what?
2.314.
Yes.
My fault for not seeing...
Oh, that's alright, I just... So, it might be as much as $2.3 million?
Yep.
Unless we get some funding, and then it'd be $500,000.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that. My general question is, is this what we call a general obligation bond? In other words, does the whole town on the hook for this? Or is this a bond that is specific to the water department as an enterprise business-type activity? I know that there are certain rules about this, and I'm unsure. I know that the bonds that currently are issued for the water and sewer department are paid by the water and sewer department fees, not by our general taxes. I'm just...could you clarify which one it is, please?
Thank you. To clarify, this is a general obligation bond.
So in other words... So there are about just under 2,000 households in this town, and only about 1,100 of them are served by the water system. So the other 900 households will share in paying for something that only works for 1,100. Is that correct? If it's a general obligation...
So I want to clarify that this provides water suppression for this side of town, so this would be a general obligation. It's also used if you consider economic development or the support of your main street and businesses this side of the water treatment plant.
Yes, the clarification is, at my house, I have a well, and I have my own septic. So I don't get benefit of a special water tank. So I just wanted to clarify that if it's a general obligation bond, almost half of us would be paying for it who wouldn't get the use of it. Unless we went to shop at Shaw's, and then we'd get some water. Thank you, that's the point that I'm wondering. And so the answer is, general obligation, all the taxpayers would be on the hook.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, we're ready to vote? We're gonna do it again? Line up over here, to my right, to your left.
(inaudible)
Attention, please. Okay, real quick, I want to make sure everybody had an opportunity to vote on Article Two and Article Three. Is there anybody out in the audience that was not able to get up here and vote, anyway with walking disability, or have a hard time walking? If there is, let me know, and we'll get the ballot out to you, so you can vote. But somebody, anybody had a hard time, wants to vote and couldn't get up here, let me know. It's open, let's see, what do we got here? Eight fourteen, so nine fourteen. Remind me, nine fourteen.
You ready?
All right.
Yes.
Okay, so, moving on, we're going to move on to Article Four, which is the operating budget. The operating budget, Article Four, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of nine million one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which represents the operating budget. Said sum does not include any other warrant articles. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that motion.
I second.
Leon?
Okay, this process started last October with department heads submitting their budgets. Then we worked through the process with the Budget Committee. Budget Committee asked us to make some cuts, and then we worked some more, and they asked us to make another cut. So, there's been approximately two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars already cut out of this budget. The nine million one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars does represent a six point six percent increase over last year. But that also takes into account inflation, and a year that we had an eight point four percent inflation rate, where the budget didn't increase anywhere near that amount. But the costs have caught up to us, and it represents all the operating budget without any of the warrant articles. Is there any further questions?
Any comments, questions on-
Are we in discussion?
Yes, we're in discussion. Of course.
Good evening. Lee Arenas, sixty-nine Mechanic Street. I'm just coming off the Budget Committee after serving five years. Prior to that, I was a selectman for fifteen years. The Budget Committee, Select Board, Town Manager, and Department Head spent a lot of time whittling down the budget. When it was first brought to the Budget Committee, the tax increase over last year was over two dollars per thousand. Between everyone, we were able to get it down to where it is now, but there is room for more reductions. The one department that has room to lower the budget is the Police Department. Before I get started, I would like to say that I am not anti-law enforcement, I'm just the opposite. I'll give you some of my background history before explaining where the money can be reduced. When I first relocated to the North Country back in nineteen eighty-nine, I became a full-time police officer for the town of Northumberland. I stayed with them for about a year and a half before going to Twin Mountain. I gave up being a full-time police officer to start my landscaping business, but stayed on several departments part-time. Back in nineteen ninety-five, I became a part-time Deputy Sheriff for Assis County, Vermont, where I still currently work. This month marks thirty years working for them. Okay, now on to where we can cut their budget. The chief would like to hire an eighth officer. By adding an eighth officer, the department would have two men on during the overnight shift. The reason for this is for safety purposes. When I worked in Northumberland, the overnight officer was on by himself, and would call out someone else if he needed assistance. When I worked in Twin Mountain, we would go off duty at midnight, and we had a non-call rotation, in the event there was a call. Typically, in Twin Mountain, the calls after midnight would either be for an accident or a domestic. We handled the calls by ourselves most of the time. I still work for the Sheriff's Department during the winter, typically for them, when I'm not plowing snow, I do a detail called Stone Garden. I usually leave town around two thirty in the morning, grab a coffee at the Big Apple, pick up a cruiser, then drive up to Canaan, check in at border patrol, and go on my shift. So, I have with me some stats. It's all the calls for the Police Department, as for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and it also has the different shifts. So, what I did, I highlighted the ones from midnight day eight, where they want the second officer, and then I highlighted the ones that, okay, they might need a second officer. So, burglary for two thousand twenty-four, midnight day, zero. Assault, one. Hazen complaint slash assault, zero. Domestic violence, ten. Disorderly conduct slash harassment, one. The next savings, the next saving would be the K-9 that they would like to get. I like to how many times they needed a K-9 in the past, and weren't able to get one from a different department. The K-9 would be used for sniffing drugs and locating missing people. They can call on other agencies if they need one. I have stats for this as well. So, for narcotic calls, this is the total for the year, thirteen. Missing person calls for the year, seven. Which brings me to the cruiser. The chief originally wanted a Tahoe for the officer and the dog. He has since decided on getting a different cruiser similar to what they have now. Just so you know, the vehicle would be a special order, and climate-controlled, for the dog. The additional cost to outfit the cruiser for the dog is six thousand one hundred dollars, and it limits the use of the cruiser strictly to the dog handler. No other officer can use that cruiser. It has to be available for the dog. With that said, the department has what is called mutual aid. Mutual aid is an agreement between agencies, where one agency will go assist another agency if called. There is no charging of fees for this. So, if another agency needs a dog and its handler, he would respond. And that means that the town of Lancaster could be paying him overtime for another agency, which we cannot recuperate any monies. What will this save the town? Wages and benefits for the eighth officer, around a hundred thousand. New cruiser, if he got the Tahoe, seventy-four thousand five hundred, which was what was in the budget. Training for the dog handler, three thousand eight hundred dollars. Annual food and vet bill for the dog, two thousand five hundred dollars. Total potential savings of one hundred eighty thousand eight hundred dollars. If you did away with all these things, you would lower the tax rate by around forty cents per thousand. I will leave it up to you, the taxpayers, to decide if you want to cut this, and how much. Keep in mind, you cannot say where the money is taken from. This is the only place I could find it in the budget. If you take the money out, the Select Board can say, okay, we're still going to put the eighth officer on. But you, as the taxpayers, have the power, and tonight, to say to them, no, we don't want an eighth officer, no, we don't want a K-9, no, we don't want a cruiser. Or maybe you do, but you need to voice your opinion. I suggested the eighth officer be put on a warrant article when we go through the budget process. We voted on it. Unfortunately, there are eight people voting, it was a split vote, four for against, four for aga- uh, four for it, so here we are. Lastly, those of you that pay water and sewer bills, keep in mind, those are probably going to double this next cycle. Thank you.
Go on. Go on, I guess it'll be up top who wants to speak.
So, Ryan Matthews, I live at thirty-six Winter Street. Just a couple of things on what Leo had to say. I don't know where he got his numbers, they are completely inaccurate. There's no way we only responded to ten domestics in the last eight years, from midnight to eight AM. We go to the same house multiple times a night sometimes. Cost of a cruiser, it's our second year, we're due for a cruiser anyways. The extra six thousand dollars, again, we have to outfit every cruiser we get. The cost for a K-9 cruiser versus a regular cruiser is, it's minimal. Few other things, with the, with the eighth officer being on duty, we cover Lancaster all night long. We wouldn't be responding to other towns. My K-9 would not be responding to other towns for overtime duty. That was already in the policy, it's already written up, that that would not happen. I, I would be willing to answer any other questions people have, as far as the K-9, but with the eighth officer and the cruiser, those are things that we really do need. Whether people think it or not, this town is dangerous, there is drugs in this town, and there are violent people in this town. And if anybody's got any questions, I'm willing to answer them while I can, but that's what I got to say about it.
Sir?
Rick Burnier, Eleven Page Hill. I've lived in this town pretty much all my life. We got our third police cruiser when Officer Coborn joined the force, and a lot of people thought at that point, we didn't need three cruisers. We've never had four cruisers. I don't see why town isn't growing. Crime might be growing, but we took care of the crime with six people this year, and now we have a seventh police officer that will be taking over by himself once he's trained. But he's gone through the school to be the seventh police officer. And I agree with anybody else up here that it's time for us to say no. It won't hurt the budget, because it's not there now. We're taking something that hasn't ever been there before and getting rid of it. We've only had one police dog in my lifetime here, and he rode in the Crown Vic, the only Crown Vic we had. And now we need a special cruiser for him? I say no, I hope the people do.
Anybody else? Rob? Wait, wait a minute. Well, Rob, hold on a second.
Now, Rob can go first.
Okay, Rob, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Rob Christie, one fifty-five Mount Prospect Road. I would like to deliver a petition from seven voters who are present, requesting a written ballot on this item.
Okay, I need to read them out, so. Okay, so, this is for Article Four, I have written ballots. People sign this, Rob Christie. So, you've got Joyce Burnier, eleven Page Hill Road, Lancaster. Richard Burnier, eleven Page Hill Road, Lancaster. Alan and Joanne Savage, fifteen Sevens Hill Road, Lancaster, New Hampshire. Catherine Hood, one fourteen Pleasant Valley Road. And Paul Hood, forty-four Pleasant Valley Road. I know all of those individuals are residents of Lancaster, so I'm not going to look those up. Before we get to the actual vote, do we have any more questions or comments, Chief? Hold on a second.
So, Chief Woodworth, Lancaster Police Department. Just want to touch on a couple of things. Since I took over, we have had four cruisers. I'm not asking for a new cruiser, that's extra and above and beyond. We currently have four, I'm asking to keep our fleet at four, so I'm not asking for an increase in approval. I don't know where that came from, but that's not true. We currently have four. If we're approved for this new cruiser, yes, it will become the K-9 cruiser. The expedition will be put out the bid, it'll be sold, and we'll stay at four. As far as the K-9 cruiser, and, you know, times have changed. Back when, when Skid had his dog, there wasn't restrictions and rules on how a dog had to be in a cop car. You know, many dogs over the years have died due to heat stroke, from being left in a car with the windows up. There's special equipment that has to be installed in this cruiser, so if it gets- There's special equipment that has to be installed in this cruiser, so if it gets too hot, there's temperature sensors, it sets off the siren, sends a signal to the handler to let him know, hey, something's wrong, your dog could die, you need to go out there and take care of that. So that's why there's a little extra cost because of the stuff that is required that wasn't required twenty years ago when Skip had his dog. As far as the eighth officer goes, since I have taken over, I've made it very clear at every select meeting I go to of what my intentions are and why. I, I've presented numbers after numbers, the selectmen have a brief with me, that's why they put it in the budget. This is not the policing, and no disrespect, Leo, you've done it a long time, but this isn't thirty years ago. Times have changed. Matt Merritt, State Trooper, shot in Dalton a few years ago, right next door. Jason, a friend of mine in St. Johnsberry, shot not that long ago responding to a domestic. Border Patrol, just a month and a half ago, if that, shot and killed up in Newport, Vermont. It's here, it's happening, and it's scary. My officer is out there from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM by himself. We are the only police department that has a cop on the street from Colbrook to Gorm to Littleton. There is no backup except for myself, Lieutenant Matthews, Officer Sullivan, getting up out of bed and coming out. Chief Charbonneau can attest to that. When Aaron Gibson was attacked and the guy tried to kill him in the Big Apple Park about 2:30 in the morning, he was by himself, and the guy was trying to take his gun and use it against him. I came out of bed, Chief Charbonneau came out of bed to help that man who's no longer a cop. It's a different world now. It is dangerous out there. And to put our guys out there and try to keep them here and say, we trust you, we want you, we need you, but go out there and do this very dangerous job by yourself with no backup for at least thirty minutes is not okay. And on the flip side of that, if somebody's in a domestic situation at two o'clock in the morning and that person is being assaulted by their loved one, and our officer, who is the only officer on, is dealing with that domestic, and now there's a car accident where somebody is seriously hurt, or another domestic, or a burglary, or something else, there is no cops to respond. None. So now, who, who's going to go? It's a different world. I, I, I feel strongly about this because it's my guys that are out there at two, three o'clock in the morning that are putting their lives on the line for everybody in this room and everybody in this town. I, I don't ask for this budget lightly. I, I'm a taxpayer myself, just obviously not here in Lancaster, but I understand tax burdens and I get it, but it's important. If we want to maintain our officers here, keep morale up, keep our men and women safe, one more body. Twenty-three cents per thousand is what that tax increase is for, for an eighth officer, I believe if my number's correct. Twenty-three cents a year per thousand, so a home that's at three hundred thousand dollars, your tax burden is sixty-nine dollars a year for an eighth officer. It's sixty-nine dollars, too much to ask for the life of one of my officers. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions?
Matt Wells, seven Winter Street. I probably don't need the mic because I speak pretty loud as it is. So coming back to this area after being gone for a while, I've got a chance to really see what has changed when it comes down to the drugs and the violence in this area. As Chief had spoken earlier, it's all around us, and we're seeing it constantly in the news, and having a single person on that night shift is not safe for their officer or for you. If you're thinking that you may not be the need for that officer, for the second officer, you are sadly mistaken, because it hasn't happened for you yet does not mean it's not going to happen to you in the future or to someone that you know and love in this town. I brought my family back here because I knew it was going to be a good place to live and raise my kids because of the safety aspect. But when I still see all the violence that's going around, especially within the past year or two that I've been here, it's no, it's a no-brainer for me to be like, yes, we need that extra person, because I don't want them to be alone. And being a prior military retiree after twenty-one years, I know what it's like to have someone there besides you, and what it's like, don't. These men and women who are out here doing this solo is absolutely absurd. I really hope you guys think very carefully about your neighbor, your family, your children, and the safety that they deserve and why we raise our families here in this kind of community with this specific request. Thank you.
Linda Gilmore, thirty-five Water Street, Lancaster. I would just say that I have had to call in the police for help with a domestic situation in my neighborhood, and it took, on what I don't think was the scariest situation ever, but it took, I think there were four cops by the time the situation was dealt with. And it was before midnight. Now, I have had encounters with this particular individual after midnight, and this person's twenty feet away from me. So I strongly feel I, I do not want to see someone come to my aid all by themselves and have to deal with whatever happens. So, sixty-nine dollars? Sign me up. Seems like a fair price to pay.
Name, address? Kyler Kennison, four zero five Elm Street. So I've worked in law enforcement for four, five years. I've worked for Chief Woodworth, excellent chief. Mr. Matthews, he's a great lieutenant. But I also see the burn on the taxpayer end of things because my taxes are really high, like all of you, all right? But there are two sides to this, and the police side of having that extra guy, it's going to burn a little bit, guys. But I've been there in the middle of Route Three, fighting with crazy people, not knowing if help's going to get there, and thankfully, it was before 1:00 AM, so a Lancaster guy was able to come help me, all right? And I want to go home to this guy every night, okay? But I also want to give this guy a good community to grow up in, and Lancaster's heading that way. So I just want, you know, it's a personal issue for me. Chief Woodworth is on the right track. It's a little bit of a burn, it is, as with everything. Taxes sucked this year, last year, it's getting worse, but this is a serious issue, that's all.
Okay, anybody else? Who said that? Moving the question? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, where's Becker?
To your right, right here.
Oh. I'm blind on that side. Hold on, turn my head one.
Eric Becker, thirty-eight High Street here in Lancaster. Many of you know what I do for work in human services, and that gives me a really special appreciation for some of the things that go on in our community that a lot of you might not be aware of, and thankfully so. There are some local conditions that make it very attractive for some violent criminal elements to come to Lancaster, including those who are involved in the Brotherhood of White Warriors, who commit violent assaults in our communities. You know, I, one of the things that I really want to mention here, calls between 2023 and 2024, calls for service increased almost by two thousand, and arrests increased by forty-one percent. Like, the fact that some of you think that this isn't important means that you haven't been affected by this, but minutes count, and you really want to have somebody respond when you need somebody to respond, because as everybody else mentioned, state police is down significantly in their, in their, their staffing. You know, we can't worry about what other communities are doing, we need to make sure, and we need to trust that the people that we have in place to tell us what they need to do the job safely have what they need to do the job safely to keep us safe.
Let's just keep in mind that last April, there was an unprecedented amount, unprecedented amount of people coming through the town, and nobody has specified if that's where the increase in arrests came from, so. The solar eclipse, if you recall?
What the chief said was there was zero arrests during the solar eclipse. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
So Lieutenant Matthews, I got the report. It's a Lancaster Police Department Agency Activity Report dated January first, two thousand twenty-four to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. So the report came from your department where I got these numbers. I don't disagree about safety, but like I said, I go two-thirty in the morning, grab a cruiser, I'm by myself. Yeah, it's dangerous out there, but let's face it, if you got the balls to do the job or you don't, okay? I, I get it. I'm sorry.
Order! All right, just, don't make it personal.
So I'll make a motion that we reduce the budget by one hundred and fifty thousand, and the Budget Committee, or the Select Board can decide where it comes from.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to reduce Article Four by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I accept.
Okay. So now what we're voting on is just the amendment. Okay. Do you want a discussion? Okay, let's have a discussion. Go ahead.
Rob Christie, one fifty-five Mount Prospect Road. I just want to comment that the motion before us is to reduce the budget. It's not a referendum on the Police Department. How the budget will be reduced if the motion passes is up to the Select Board. It's easy to forget that what Mr. Enos is telling you is one place where that amount of money could be trimmed from the budget. So although the focus seems to have been on police safety, I think the motion is actually about reducing the budget, which will have the effect of reducing our tax burden. Now, if the Select Board chooses to take that reduction and focus it on the Police Department, that's the Select Board's decision. I think we're, don't forget, what we, the motion is, is to reduce the budget. The motion is not to attack the police force. I think there's a good argument that safety is an issue, but let's just focus on what we're talking about, which is money, not Police Department.
Okay, anybody else? Sir?
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
I apologize if this information isn't a budget, but I couldn't find, but I guess I have one question maybe to.
Hold on, Judge.
My name's Peter Bornstein, and I live in Lancaster. If we approve the nine point one one eight million or just under that operating budget, what, what would the new tax, town tax rate be?
Eight point two six.
Okay, so it was?
Seven fifty five.
It was eight twenty-six? And it was seven fifty-six? One as easy as it looks. So that's about a nine percent tax increase, and that's what we had for a tax increase last year, between twenty-three and twenty-four. Last year, the tax increase was about nine point one percent. And again, I'm not up here to say the budget should be cut from any particular place. The police, for example, I think the public safety considerations that the chief and the others have discussed are, have merit. But I just am making an overall observation, the same one I made at the Budget Committee hearing, which is that two nine percent increases back to back is just, in my view, too much. Thank you. And what I proposed to the Budget Committee was something at a five percent rate. I mean, costs are going up everywhere. I appreciate the challenges that the town and the town manager and the department heads and everybody face, but everybody's got the same, every taxpayer in this room has all their costs going up. State of New Hampshire has all the same insurance and maintenance and personnel costs going up. They're cutting their budget three percent. And it's not because what they spend their money on the budget now is worthwhile or valuable, it's because they don't have the money. And I just guess I would, from my perspective, what should be, we should be looking at, what's the bottom line of the taxpayer? A five percent increase would be a seven dollar ninety-four cent tax rate, which some people in this room think may be too high as well. But at least in my view, eight twenty-six or a nine point one percent tax, or a nine percent tax rate increase for the second year in a row is too high. So that's my objection.
Sir? Awesome.
Matt Wells, seven Winter Street again. So while Mr. Christie says is correct that the amendment is talking about this chunk of money, right? The Police Department has been cut four times already from the Budget Committee on coming up with what they're proposing now. So do you think that the Select Board, the Budget Committee is not going to find every little way, and that that's not going to affect the Police Department? Once again, I feel like you may be tapping safety.
Rick Burnier, eleven Page Hills. I don't think anybody cut Police Department budget by the Budget Committee. I think it was cut, it was done from what happened at the Budget Meeting, and they cut out the prosecuting attorney, I believe.
That's one of them.
What's that?
You said that was one of them.
That's one of them. What else got cut?
Back and forth, you just listed one person at a time.
That's all I know that got cut was by the Budget Committee, oh, by the Select Board, excuse me, after they were recommended a hundred thousand dollars by the Budget Committee.
Leo Rideout, thirty-one Causeway, member of the Budget Committee. My initial motion was to cut the budget two hundred thousand. It was negotiated down to a hundred thousand. Where it was cut and for what it was cut was not aimed at the Police Department whatsoever. They went, it's my understanding that the Select Board, the department heads went through line by line and come up with whatever was cut. And other than that, I'm not going to take any blame for targeting the Police Department,
Yes, that's actually a hundred percent correct. The Budget Committee asked us to find another hundred thousand dollars in reductions in the budget. So I know I personally and the other selectmen went line by line through the budget item. I called my list the nickel and dime list. So went through, took five hundred here, a hundred here, a thousand there. Every department in the town ended up having some kind of a cut, or multiple cuts to different And did receive some criticism on that cut. The idea of doing the nickel and dime list was, we felt it out, it was our duty to come up with that hundred thousand dollar cut, and actually ended up being about a hundred and fourteen thousand, that would make the less impact on the taxpayers. The taxpayers weren't going to lose any services with the cuts that we made. And it was nickel and diming, the department heads, like I said, a thousand out of this, couple thousand out of gravel. Some come out of the police department wages. We did do away with the prosecutor. The, uh, I don't know how else to explain it, other than we went line by line and nickled and dimed the budget to get to a $114,000 cut. And if this extra $150,000 passes, and I'm not a naysayer, but the focus has been on the police department. I, as a selectman, will take what the voters vote for here tonight and honor that to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay. So, any other questions, or are we ready to go to a vote? And what we're voting on is just a motion to reduce the 9,117,987 to 8,967,987. So that's what the motion is. Unfortunately, because we have requests to do this, I think we've got to vote on the motion by written ballot as well. So the first thing we're going to be doing is we'll be voting by secret ballot on whether or not to even, to amend Article 4. If you want to amend it, you're going to check yes. If you don't want to amend it, you're going to check no. And then we're going to count those immediately, and then we'll move on to actually voting on Article 4 by secret ballot. So that's what we're voting on, okay? So we're going to line up, do it again. Okay, any votes? Alright, council, back to the end again. Just to be clear, if you vote yes, you are voting for the amendment to reduce Article 4 by 150,000. You don't want to make any exceptions, vote no. Next.
Alright, I have the results of the vote on just the amendment. It's actually fairly close. The amendment does fail. The vote was seventy-six yes to amend it. The vote for no to amend it was eighty-eight. So the amendment fails. So now what we're gonna do is vote on Article Four as originally written for the nine million one hundred and seventeen thousand nine eighty-seven. So we gotta do that against it.
Can I just make one point? And I know it's a voting thing, but it's about the canine. People may not understand, the Rotary paid for the canine. They cut the town, they checked for eight thousand dollars. The dog costs seven. The other thousand is to outfit the dog. So that did not cost anybody in this room a dime. The Rotary paid for the canine. Just, I wanna make sure that's understood.
I'm sorry, can you hear me ma'am? Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with the vote. Becker? You want one more comment, I guess?
Eric Becker, thirty-eight High Street. Mr. Moderator, I wonder if it might be possible to call for a non-binding vote to kinda get the temperature of the room to see if we really wanna proceed tonight and spend all this extra time on secret ballots.
Okay, let's go forward with this vote first and then remake that motion. I know it'll be non-binding, we can remake it after we do this between articles, okay? Okay, so now we're voting, again, we're voting on Article One as originally written for nine million one hundred and seventeen thousand nine eighty-seven.
Article Four.
Sorry, Article Four. Am I saying it correct? Alright. Article Four, we're gonna be voting again by secret ballot. If you vote yes, you're voting for Article Four. If you vote no, you're voting against it, to be clear, okay? Let's do it again. Okay, folks?
No, no.
Hello? Okay, I have the results of Article Two.
Article Four.
Article Four, alright. Sorry. Anyway. Okay, so the results for Article Four. There was a hundred and four Article Four and fifty-nine against, so Article Four passes. Becker, you have?
It's me again, Eric Becker, thirty-eight High Street here in Lancaster. I, I move that we take a non-binding vote to see the temperature in the room in regards to proceeding with secret ballot, uh, maybe putting it under this up and down.
Okay, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. So, we're voting on, those in favor of proceeding by secret ballot on Articles, raise your hand. Those opposed by proceeding on secret ballot, raise your hand. Okay? Majority, the vast majority of the room is opposed.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay? Okay, so now we're gonna go on, that was a non-binding vote, so anyway. But, we're moving on to Article Five. And, in the meantime, you guys are gonna start counting Article Two? Okay, that's why I had Article Two on my brain, that was up next, we're gonna count those. Article Five, appropriated to capital reserve funds. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate for sum of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to be added to the following capital reserve fund accounts previously established for the purpose and amounts indicated with said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. Highway, fifty-five thousand. Fire Department, fifty thousand. Police, ten thousand. Library, ten thousand. Cemetery, ten thousand. Town Hall, ten thousand. Transfer Station, ten thousand. Colonel Town, ten thousand. Total one sixty-five. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Articles Five.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, the capital reserve fund of one hundred and sixty-five thousand is level funded from twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, and there would be no tax impact this year, if approved.
Okay, if there are any discussion or questions on Article Five? Okay, call for vote. All those in favor of Article Five? All opposed? Article Five passes. Article Six, reimbursed industrial development fund. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate for sum of nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars, we add the industrial development capital reserve fund previously established with said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. Do I have a motion?
I'm sorry. I motion Article Six.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, Article Six is just taking the payments that we have received in repayment of the loans from the town's revolving loan fund that goes to businesses. So we were repaid nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. We're asking you for permission to put that nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars back into that loan fund. Is there any questions?
Okay, call Articles Six to a vote. All those in favor of Article Six. All opposed? Article Six passes. Article Seven, bridge repair. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate for sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of repairing the bridge rebutment on the bridge located at the former Alden Sawmill on Garland Road, and authorize the withdrawal of two hundred thousand dollars from the bridge repair capital reserve fund we're repaying for that purpose, with the remaining balance of one hundred thousand dollars to come from the unassigned fund balance. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Seven.
I second.
And I'll speak about it. So this is a, this is a bridge joint on the bridge described in front of Clayton Alden's old sawmill. Uh, it's a regular type of maintenance that has to be done. It's not out of the ordinary, the bridge is old, um, and it's coming under the, uh, the Bridge Maintenance Fund, and the remaining in that fund will only be thirty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars, so we probably ought to start next year beefing that back up. Any questions?
Okay, all those in favor of Article Seven? All opposed? Article Seven passes. Article Eight, storm reconstruction. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate for sum of one million dollars, which is the total estimated cost to complete the road construction required due to the storm of July tenth, twenty-twenty-four. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which represents seventy-five percent of the costs which are anticipated to be reimbursed through the Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Assistant Grant, with the remaining balance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which represents the twenty-five percent match to come from the unassigned fund balance. Do I have a motion?
Um, I move Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second Article Eight.
And I'll speak about it. As you all know, last year, that rain came and we had a little water. So we, we worked through the summer to fix the road. We worked with FEMA. This is basically our match for the repairs that FEMA will not cover. So it's coming out of the unassigned fu- uh, fund balance, so there is no tax impact. Any questions?
Okay, all those in favor of Article Eight? All opposed? Article Eight passes. Okay, Article Nine, Town Hall repairs and updates. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate for sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of making repairs and improvements, the Town Hall slash Office Building with said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. Do I have a motion?
Uh, I make that motion.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second Article Nine.
Okay, this article will allow the town to access funds for much-needed repairs in this building. Um, it's, it needs some TLC, and, um, it'd be primarily for boiler, radiator, and controls, and, uh, again, no tax impact. Any questions?
Questions on Article Nine? Seeing none? Oops. One?
Uh, Leo Wrightout, thirty-one Cosway. And I just wanted to clarify, this is in addition to the hundred, is it a hundred and thirty thousand?
Hundred and twenty-four, twenty-three, I think it's in that.
That is in the capital reserve for the Town Hall.
Yep, it'll be an addition. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all those in favor of Article Nine? All opposed? Article Nine passes. Okay, Article Ten, purchase new ambulance. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate for sum of one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new ambulance, the Fire slash EMS Department with said funds to come from the Fire Department Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second it.
Okay, I'll explain. Um, we're talking about, uh, replacing the twenty-twenty-four Transit, which right now has over two hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. Um, the request is for a hundred and forty-three thousand. It would come out of the Fire Department Capital Reserve Account, so there would be no tax impact. Any questions?
Any questions on Article Ten or comments? Okay, all those in favor of Article Ten? All those opposed? Okay, Article Ten passes. Article Eleven, purchase speed trailer. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate for sum of nineteen thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars for the purpose of purchasing a speed trailer for the Police Department, and authorize the withdrawal expenditure of four thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to come from the Police Department Capital Reserve Fund, with the remaining balance of fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars to come from the Office of Highway Safety Grant. Do I have a motion?
Um, yes, I move Article Eleven.
I'll second it.
I will speak to it. In twenty-twenty-four, the Lancaster Police Department had two thousand eight hundred and four motor vehicle stops, which was forty percent of their calls for service. In an effort to reduce speeds, the town applied for an Office of Highway Safety Grant for a mobile speed message trailer. This solar power trailer can be used not only for speed signaling, but also for safety messages. It can be utilized by all town departments. The request will reduce the police capital reserve fund by the match of four thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars to bring the fund's balance to forty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Therefore, there will be no tax impact the coming year. Any questions?
Okay, all those in favor of Article Eleven? All those opposed? Article Eleven passes. Okay, let me back up a second. We have the results from Article Two. The votes on Article Two, it's a hundred and twenty-five yes and thirty-one no, so Article Two passed. Okay. Move on to Article Thirteen. Oh, Article Twelve, sorry. Wastewater. Wastewater SEADA system, which stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. To see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate for the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of purchasing a CCAD system with said funds to come from the Sewer Enterprise Fund unrestricted fund balance. The CCAD system allows key functions of the wastewater system to be alarmed, monitored, and adjusted remotely. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Moderator, I'll speak on this. A wastewater supervisory control and data acquisition, SCADA, SCADA, system is needed to comply with the anticipated EPA medium-sized wastewater system permit requirements. A SCADA system collects data from the sensors throughout the wastewater treatment process, allowing operators to remotely monitor and adjust equipment based on real-time conditions to maximize resource usage by providing detailed monitoring capabilities. SCADA systems help wastewater treatment plants comply with the EPA standards related to affluent quality and operational efficiency. The request is for $100,000 to come from the Sewer Enterprise Fund unrestricted fund balance. As of the 2023 audit, the fund has a balance of $486,007. This would, again, have no tax impact in the coming year. Any questions? Yes?
Rob Christie, 155 Mount Prospect Road, Lancaster, New Hampshire. Could you just clarify the difference between the Enterprise Fund unrestricted balance and the town unrestricted balance? I'm sort of confused about, what does an Enterprise Fund mean?
The Enterprise Fund is the sewer unrestricted fund balance. That's all collected by sewer rates and stuff that is collected by the town. Cannot be spent on water projects, cannot be spent on anything else in the town. It has strictly to do with the sewer system.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of Article Twelve? All opposed? Article Twelve passes. Article Thirteen, sewer energy audit items. To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate for the sum of $80,000 for the purpose of completing items from the Sewer Department Energy Audit with said funds to come from the Sewer Enterprise Fund unrestricted fund balance. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second it.
I'll speak to this. The town in 2023 underwent a wastewater energy audit from the state, and we found ways that we could make improvements to our system that would be proactive and prevent costly emergency repairs later. The first would be to rebuild two main sanitary pumps which handle 85% of the load and operate continuously 24/7. That would save $5,235 a year. A payback period would be less than seven years. Those pumps are currently 55 years old. The request is for $80,000, like the previous article. This would come from the Sewer Enterprise Fund unrestricted fund balance, and that fund balance as of the 2023 audit had $486,007 in it. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of Article Thirteen? All those opposed? Article Thirteen passes. Article Fourteen, library drain system and dehumidifier. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate for the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of installing a subfloor drain system and dehumidifier in the William D. Weeks Memorial Library Children's Room, and authorize the withdrawal expenditure of said sum in the library capital reserve fund. Do I have a motion?
I motion on Article Fourteen.
I'll second Article Fourteen.
And I'll speak to it. As of last week, the library flooded again. So, this isn't, we need to get this resolved. It's $10,000 coming out of the capital reserve of the library with a balance remaining of There is no tax impact to this project. Any questions?
Okay, all those in favor of Article Fourteen? All opposed? Article Fourteen passes. Article Fifteen, solar panel project. See if the town will vote to raise appropriate for the sum of $198,490 for the purpose of funding a solar panel project at the wastewater treatment lagoons under the provisions of RSA 32:3, paragraph 6D, and RSA 32:7, five, paragraph five. $129,018 is to come from the New Hampshire Department of Energy Municipal Solar Assistance Grant, and the balance of the $69,427 to come from the unassigned fund balance. Select board will utilize grant opportunities which could lower this amount. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article Fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second it.
I'll speak to this article. I think most folks know that we have solar panels at the transfer station that have been very helpful in reducing our costs. We also have panels at the lagoons which don't fully cover all of our costs. We learned of a grant, that was from the federal government, to the state. It's a one-time-only grant. It's not actually for energy purposes, it's for infrastructure improvements, and this would go a long way to cut our expenses. We did secure a grant, that grant of $129,000, which covers 65% of the cost. There's a federal direct pay initiative where we would get funding, once the project is finished, come back to us, and then there's the cost of $9,925. The net savings, if this is approved over a 25-year period, is $243,000 plus. The grant funds are reimbursable, which means the town has to appropriate the entire $198,000. We would not move forward until we have assurances from the New Hampshire Department of Energy that that funding is actually secure. We are in contact with them pretty regularly. They are confident that there will be minimum impact, again, because this is infrastructure and not energy-related, even though it's coming from the Department of Energy. If this was approved tonight, we would have issue competitive bids once we get assurances from the state, and there would be milestones in project completion. We would expect it would be completed by 20, at the end of 2025, and again, there would be no tax impact this year. Any questions?
Okay, all those in favor of Article Fifteen? All opposed? Article Fifteen passes. Excuse me for just a minute. Okay, so I have the results for Article Three. This was extremely close, been triple-counted. 82 yes, 80 no, so Article Three does pass by two votes.
Wow.
You need three fifths.
Oh, it needs three fifths, right?
Yeah.
I don't think it passes.
Sorry, hold on, forgot about the three fifths. Sorry, Article Three, sorry, I forgot about the three fifths, so it did fail.
It failed. You needed to run by 60%.
It was 82 to 80, so I need three fifths, I forgot about three fifths, sorry. Failed. Article Three failed.
No, Article Three failed.
Three?
Three.
Just to be clear, I forgot about the three fifths rule, sorry, requirement. So, Article Three did fail, it was 82 to 80. So, 82 yes, 80 no, so. Double check that.
Oh, yeah, they need, you needed 97 something, 96 votes.
Yeah.
6% of the total was like 97. 125 to 31. I think you thought, because you had like 100 and something, right? That passed.
Yep, 125.
Yeah, Article Two definitely passed. The yes votes on Article Two was 125, the no votes were 31. So, Article Two definitely passed. Sorry for any confusion on that. Two passed. Article Two passed, Article Three failed. Okay, Article Sixteen, establish an energy-efficient capital reserve fund. See if the town will vote to establish an energy-efficient capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 35:1, for the purpose of funding and maintaining energy efficiency and renewable energy projects. Outreach initiatives related to increasing energy efficiency and/or reducing energy costs and to raise appropriate sum of $100,000, $1,000, sorry, $1,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second Article Sixteen.
I'll explain this article. So, much like the other capital reserve accounts that we have for the library, for the police, for the fire, and the other departments, we don't have anything for our energy efficiency initiatives. So, setting this up would allow us to put money away for when we do need repairs to the solar panels or other energy issues that we may have in town. The tax impact is less than a penny per 1,000.
Do we have any questions, comments on Article Sixteen? Okay, all those in favor of Article Sixteen? All opposed? Article Sixteen passes. Okay, Article Seventeen, rescind collection of motor vehicle registration surcharge. See if the town will vote to rescind the authorization given the town clerk to collect a motor vehicle registration surcharge, the amount and person of which is set forth in RSA 261:153, paragraph five, and deposit $45,197, which represents the balance of the account into the general fund. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move Article Seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I'll second it.
I will speak to the article, and this goes way back to 1991, the town of Lancaster implemented a motor vehicle registration surcharge to support solid waste revenues. This surcharge was set at $3 per passenger vehicle, was intended to cover the cost of tire disposal. However, with current disposal cost of $4.50 per passenger car tire, the actual expense for disposing of four tires now totals $18 per vehicle, exceeding the funds collected. As a result, the surcharge is no longer serving its original purpose to address this gap and better allocate resources, we propose redirecting the remaining surcharge funds into a new account to assist the highway department with improvements to the roads and sidewalks. This adjustment will ensure that funds are used more effectively to meet the town's current needs. Tires will be disposed of at the current market disposal rate. This does not have a tax impact this year. Any questions?
Rob?
Rob Christie, 155 Mount Prospect Road. So, we currently can dispose four tires at no charge because we have already been charged $3 per tire, is that correct?
That is my understanding.
So, what this will do is mean, instead of disposing four tires for no extra cost, we now have to pay $18 for our four tires?
That is also my understanding.
Okay, okay, so, used to be you paid your $12, or whatever four times three is, anyway, and if you didn't dispose of any tires, that was up to you. But now, what will happen is if you have to dispose of tires, you will be charged $18 instead of basically being able to dispose of them free, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
The, uh...
Hold on.
But...
Go ahead.
Tricia Fournette, 96 Page Hill Road, Lancaster. So, the $3 is only a one-time charge, so it's only $3, it's not per tire that comes off of your registration, so there's only $3 that we pay. But, when you get rid of four tires, you're paying $4.50 that's coming out of the Lancaster Transfer Station's budget. So, they're losing by only getting $3. It doesn't even cover one tire, so it's not what Rob is saying.
Okay.
It's only $3 that is charged.
Correct, you, it was $3 per year. Most people don't dispose of four tires each year, so let's make that clear. But let's also make clear, most people never realize the money for that because they go and have their tires changed at a commercial operation, in the commercial operation and then is charged for disposing of tires, whether you paid your $3 or not. The commercial operation still has to pay to dispose of the tires. So, not only is it getting us to a place where we're getting the proper amount for tire disposal, but it's also a fair system where you're not paying to dispose of tires that you never dispose of.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Seventeen? All opposed? Article Seventeen passes. Article Eighteen, create municipal and transportation capital reserve fund. To see if the town will vote to establish a municipal and transportation capital reserve fund and to further authorize in the provisions of RSA 261:153, paragraph six, the collection of additional fee of $5 for heavy vehicles, including mobile home and house trailers, heavy trucks, and truck tractors where gross vehicle weight exceeds 18,000 pounds, and buses, and an additional fee of $3 for automobiles, light vehicles, including trucks and commercial motorized vehicles, including tractor tires for the purpose of supporting a municipal and transportation improvement fund. 50 cents of each fee paid will be retained by the town clerk for administrative costs, and the remaining amount should be deposited into municipal and transportation capital reserve fund and appropriate $45,197 in the unassigned fund balance, which represents the funds for the discontinued motor vehicle waste fund, to be deposited into the municipal and transportation capital reserve fund. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, this will create a fund using the $45,197 from the former motor vehicle registration surcharge from Article Fifteen. The fees in this article are directly in line with the fees from the, lost my place, 1991 motor vehicle registration surcharge. If established, a municipal and transportation improvement fund will allow Lancaster to fund improvements in the transportation system, including roads, bridges, bicycle, and related infrastructure, to help to fray those costs. These funds may be used as a matching funds for state or federal funds allocated for local or regional transportation improvements. This, again, has no impact on your property tax rates. Is there any questions?
Okay, all those in favor of Article Eighteen? All opposed? Article Eighteen passes. Article Nineteen, Tri-County Community Action Program. Yes?
I was wondering if I may speak for, um, Rob, for, I have something to say for Articles Nineteen through Twenty-Six, before we get there, it kind of involves all of them.
Why don't you go with the microphone?
As long as she's standing at the microphone, thank you. My name is Terry Anderson. I am a member of the Budget Committee, but I am talking as a resident this evening. So, Articles Nineteen, Twenty, up through Twenty-Six. So, these are all level-funded warrant articles. So, there is, there's three articles, I think there's the airport, food pantry, and the backpack are the, are the articles that were increased by $2,400. The rest of those articles are being funded as the same as they were last year, so they're level-funded. So, they're not asking for any increases, I just thought everybody should know, know this. So, if they're asking for $17,000, it was $17,000. If they're asking for $2,400, it was $2,400. So, this is mostly on services provided to the town of Lancaster. So, from what I understand, the services... So from what I understand, the services have increased, but the level or the amount of money that are looking for the town to help is the same as they were last year in last year's budget. That's all I'm going to say, thank you.
All right. Okay, Article 19. Tri-County Community Action Program. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $8,045 for the support of the Tri-County Community Action Programs. Include fuel and electrical assistance, weatherization, transportation, homeless intervention and prevention, guardianship, RSVP, and workforce programs. Do I have a motion on Article 19? Anybody from the audience can make a motion. Got a motion, do I have a second? All right, motion and second. Do we have anybody here to talk about this? Becker?
Eric Becker, 38 High Street. Here in Lancaster, I also serve as the Housing Stability Director for Tri-County CAP. The $8,045 ask is based on a $2.50 formula over population, so it's based on 3,218 for the population of Lancaster, as compared to Berlin, for instance, 9,425 population for a requested ask of 23,563. Last year, in Lancaster, we served 2,445 clients for a combined service value of $694,710.11. I'd be happy to yield to any questions, if there are any.
Okay, do we have any questions on Article 19? Rob?
Since fuel prices are going up, we might have surtaxes, surcharges, tariffs, or whatever, I would like to make motion that we amend this amount upward to $11,000 to help accommodate the expenses for fuel that people are going to be facing in the near future. So I move that we change the amount to $11,000. Do we have a second?
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion to amend up to $11,000? Okay, so what we're going to be voting on is Article 19 to increase the...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I just wanted to ask back for one question. Eric, what do you feel about this extra money?
I appreciate the motion. Anything that we received goes to match for our grants and really supports the work that we do. You know, so I appreciate the vote of confidence in our services, and, you know, it's up to the will of the people, but I think it's very gracious, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what we're voting on is a motion to amend Article 19 to increase the $8,045 to $11,000. All those in favor of amending Article 19 to $11,000? Keep those up. All right, those that are against. Hold on a second. Make sure you get those up high, a couple of those hard to see. So Article 19 has been amended to go from $8,045 to $11,000. Let me reread Article 19. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $11,000 for the support of Tri-County Community Action Programs, to include fuel and electrical assistance, weatherization, transportation, homeless intervention and prevention, guardianship, RSVP, and workforce programs. All those in favor of Article 19? All opposed. Article 19 with $11,000 passes. Okay, Article 20. North Country Home Health and Hospice. See if the Town of Lancaster, New Hampshire, will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $17,991 for the purpose of supporting hospice, home health, palliative, and long-term care services provided by North Country Home Health and Hospice. Do I have a motion on Article 20? Who made that motion? Okay, second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. Anybody here to speak on Article 20? We need to vote to let you speak.
Yes. Mr. Moderator, my name is Lauren Anderson. I'm a resident of Bethlehem, New Hampshire, and a representative of North Country Healthcare, and I would like to speak tonight on behalf of North Country Home Health and Hospice.
Okay, all those in favor of letting you speak? All opposed? Go for it.
North Country Home Health and Hospice Agency is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we serve approximately 76,000 residents across the 2,705 square miles of our Ketchum area in Grafton and Coas County. That's about 41 communities, and we ask for funding from 38 of our communities. The reason we don't ask for the same amount is that some of them are run together as villages, such as in the Haybrell area. In 2024, we made 53,162 visits across our two counties. In our service area, we experienced 11% increase in the number of patients served and a higher acuity level, meaning all of these patients needed more care, and saw a 14% rise in total visits of skilled care, as well as our PT and OT programs and our hospice visits. This reflects a growing reliance on our care, and often we are a lifeline for patients who are not able to get care elsewhere. In Lancaster, we visited 129 patients 3,506 times for home health, hospice, and long-term care. At the same time that our complexity of care has risen, with more patients facing higher acuity conditions that require advanced clinical expertise, our costs and reimbursements are going down, and we struggle to make sure we're meeting all of the needs of our patients. This money goes a long way to helping your friends and neighbors in our communities and making sure that they have the care that they need. I know that everyone is tired, so I will stop there, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, do we have any questions?
I have a general question.
Yes.
Brad Griswold, 101 Mount Prospect Road, Lancaster. And this applies to Articles 19 through 26. Is my assumption correct that all of the organizations in Articles 19 through 26 are 503(c) charitable organizations?
I can only speak for mine, and yes, and I know Tri-County CAP is as well.
Okay, so with all these organizations as public citizens, we can make deductible contributions to these organizations in support, correct?
You can, yes.
Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Any other comments?
At the public hearing, we had asked for some additional information. We had asked how many communities that you ask money from, and what those donations added up to be. And we were under the assumption that we were going to get that information, and when I spoke with Jessica, she said that she had not received that information. And I know this is the second year that we have asked for that information and not...
She is, we're having a problem. What? Trish, can you speak right into the microphone, see if that helps a little bit?
So what I'm asking is, at the public hearing, it was asked that they bring to the Town of Lancaster, you know, how many towns they ask for money from, and what they ask from each town, and they were supposed to get us that information. This is the second year in a row we've asked for that information at the public hearing, and they've never complied with that information, so just throwing that out there.
I'm happy to comply with any official request. I do have the four, excuse me, the four largest towns and the contributions. Lancaster is number four. I can certainly go and grab all 38 communities and read them, if that's what you'd like me to do. It's, we fill out the required forms for each of the towns, and I'm happy to work with the town to show you what we're getting from other towns if that's helpful in the future.
Do we want her to get that list? Now? What's that?
It would be nice to have that in the future.
In the future? Okay. All right. Any other comments on Article 20? Okay, all's in favor of Article 20. All those opposed. Article 20 passes. Article 21. Food pantry. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $5,000 for the support of the Lancaster food pantry.
I'm moving.
Okay, second, anybody?
Second.
All right. Anybody here to discuss the food pantry?
Jay Tolman, 275 North Road.
Try the second one, the one to your right.
Sure. That's a good one. No. So my name's Jay Tolman, I'm with the food pantry, I live at 275 North Road. This past year, the increase in the food pantry has been over 16%. We are coming to the town to actually ask for $1,000 more. You graciously gave us $4,000 last year. We're looking for $5,000 total this year. We had 5,228 people that we gave food to over this past year. The Lancaster group of that is 43%. So 43% of the users come from Lancaster. We do have 25 other towns that also receive food from us. People come from as far away as Pittsburgh and as far south as Swenconia. So we cover a large area. We're a food pantry that actually lets people have some dignity when they come in. They pick the food off the shelves as to what they want to take home with them. Most other food pantries in the area have a box, and you get what's in the box, whether or not you want to eat it or not is your problem, but you've got the food, so you won't starve. But we allow people to choose. It's worked out very well. We have people that come back on a weekly basis, some people we see once a month, some people we see every three months. So many of the people don't take what they need because they're afraid that they're taking food out of somebody else's mouth. So, I just ask you to thank you for the support that you've given us, and we appreciate your efforts.
Are there any questions or comments on that? Where is that coming from? Okay, see ya.
Angela Blant, 28 Second Street. Do you guys get other funds from other towns that...
Yes, we do.
You do? Do you have a list of what, do they compare to what we would give you or have given you?
Yes, we ask the same of several other towns.
Okay, and do you normally get the funds from those towns for the people that we're serving from them?
Well, when we talk about going over to the Vermont side, no, we do not get funds from the Vermont towns.
Okay.
Okay, we do get funds from the New Hampshire towns.
Okay, and so the other New Hampshire towns would, the money that we get compensates for the number of people that you are serving from other towns, is that correct?
Well, you're actually paying for less than what you're using.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions?
My name is Cindy Colby, and I live on Kilkeny Street, and my question is, do you get any food from the New Hampshire Food Bank?
Yes, we do.
Eric Becker, 38 High Street. One of the many hats I wear with Tri-County CAP is administering the Emergency Food Access Program through USDA. And I just want to speak for a second, how valuable this resource is in the community. The three counties, Grafton, Carroll, and Coas County, receive about 21% of all the commodities foods that come into New Hampshire. And this pantry in particular is one of the reasons that that percentage doesn't get cut down, right? Because if we leave food on the table, so to speak, and can't distribute it, that percentage will be cut down and will never get it back. Every time that I need to find a home for food because some other pantry is declining, they will take it and they will utilize it, and their numbers back it up. And so, you know, if it were not for the work that they're doing and a few other pantries scattered across the three counties, we would see less USDA food, which comes at no cost to these pantries, and they could deliver at no cost to their constituents. We would lose that percentage and we would not get it back, so thank you.
And again, mutually, I mean, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without you, you know, with CAP.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, all's in favor of Article 21. All opposed. Article 21 passes. Article 22. CASA. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $1,000 for the support of CASA, court-appointed special advocates of New Hampshire. Do we have a motion on that one? Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a few seconds, all right. Anybody here to speak on CASA?
My name is Chris Van Bergen. I serve as an advisory council member for the North Country for CASA New Hampshire, and I'm a resident of Lancaster, 29 Kilkeny. CASA of New Hampshire utilizes volunteers to represent the voice of the child in cases where children are part of a court case typically removal by DCYF. In lieu of the volunteers that CASA provides, the courts will appoint a guardian ad litem for children. The appointed guardian ad litem is required to visit a child once during the life of their case, which could be anywhere from one to three years. Our volunteers visit with children once a month, and also visit with other service providers, their physicians, social workers, caseworkers, teachers, and so forth. And so they're much better positioned to speak for the voice of the child in these court cases. They do not represent parents, they do not represent DCYF, they represent the kids. In 2024, we had to turn away five cases representing nine children in Lancaster alone because we did not have enough volunteers to take care of those cases. In the North Country as a whole, North Country covering Berlin, Colebrook, Lancaster, and Littleton Courts, we turned away 51 children, and they were left to the oversight of a once-per-case guardian ad litem. In 2024, our Coas volunteers, we have 17 volunteers, they donated 4,512 hours over the course of 635 visits and the related court dates, and traveled over 42,000 miles to meet the needs of these children, with the ultimate goal of keeping our kids safe and in safe homes. And as was mentioned earlier, this is a level-funded request of $1,000. We're very appreciative of the support of the town in prior years and would really love your consideration this year as well.
Do we have any questions? Okay, all's in favor of Article 22. All opposed. Article 22 passes. Article 23. Mount Washington Regional Airport. See if the town will vote to raise... See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $864 for the town's share of the operating budget for the Mount Washington Regional Airport for the current fiscal year. Do I have a motion? Got a second? Motion second. Anybody here to discuss Article 23?
You probably don't know who I am by now. My name is Rob Christie, 155 Mount Prospect Road. I am the Lancaster Commissioner of the Airport Commission, appointed by the Select Board, and I want to mention what you get out of the airport. A very important thing happened last year when we had the bad flood events. Civil Air Patrol, which is based at the airport, did a lot of the flights determining where the flood damage was and what exactly was a problem to be quantified. So there's a lot of sort of invisible value, if you will, that comes to you from having the airport. Also, we have an airshow coming up at the end of June, which will be focused not on pilots and airplane owners, but focused on you all, fun-for-all, flying, acrobatics, skydivers, all sorts of things. So, and I also would like to mention that the amount we're asking for this year is half of what we asked for last year. So there's a lot of value. And the last point is that without this airport, we wouldn't have a lot of resources that we now have. And if we were faced with replacing it, it would be just impossible. We would never be able to duplicate it. And the amount of money that passes through the airport budget is on the order of half a million dollars a year. That's in grants from the Department of Transportation and from the Federal Aviation Administration. And so, to me, if you say there are five towns in the compact, half a million dollars, you're getting $100,000 worth of value for $864. And so I recommend it.
Any questions or comments on the airport, Article 23? Okay, all those in favor of Article 23? All opposed? Article 23 passes. Article 24, Andersgoggin Valley Home Care Services. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $14,000 for the purpose of supporting Lancaster's elderly and disabled residents needing long-term care, homemaking, bath care, and nursing as provided by Andersgoggin Valley Home Care Services. We have a motion on Article 24. Motion? We have a second? You got a second in the back? And anybody here to discuss Article 24?
Moderator, I'm Margot Sullivan. I'm from Berlin, New Hampshire, and I'm the Executive Director of AV Home Care Services. I'd like permission to address...
Get a little closer to the microphone there.
I'm Margot Sullivan. I'm the Executive Director of AV Home Care Services, and I'm from Berlin. I'd like permission to address the town.
Can we give her permission to speak? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you. Andersgoggin Valley Home Care Services has been providing home care, homemaking, bath care, and nursing services for Coas County for the last five years. Six, actually, now. Started in 2019. We've been in business, though, for 50 years this year, in fact, this month. We are proudly partnering with the town of Lancaster. Last year, we provided 2,600 hours of care with, that's a combination of the nursing and the homemaking and the bath services that we provided. We're asking for $14,000 this year, the same as last year. We do get allocations from other towns in Coas County. The city of Berlin allocates $19,500. Gorham allocates $14,000. Northumberland allocates $10,000, and Whitefield allocates $5,500.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, all those in favor of Article 24? All opposed? Article 24 passes.
Thank you.
Article 25, Backpack Program. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $1,776 to assist with the cost of North Country Weekend Backpack Program. Do I have a motion? Motion? Do I have a second? We got a second, okay.
Linda Ogul, Burnside Street.
Just step a little closer to the microphone.
Linda Ogul, Burnside Street.
Okay.
Every week, a dedicated group of volunteers come together to pack 118 bags of food, which include breakfast, lunch, snacks, milk, and fresh fruit, covering the weekend food for 243 kids. We cover five sites. Once these bags are packed, we put them in our car. We take them to the schools that we cover. And this equates to 970 meals a weekend. This is a daunting task, but we do it. And without the support of the towns, the PAC Solution, Tillison Foundation, and donations from the public such as you all, there's no way that we could carry this out. We're only asking for 5% of the students we cover in Lancaster, which is 53.
Do we have any questions?
We are a 501(c).
Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor of Article 25? All opposed? Article 25 passes. Article 26, Northern Human Services, White Mountain Mental Health. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $5,921 for the support of Northern Human Services, White Mountain Mental Health. Do I have a motion? Motion up there? Do we have a second? Second over there? Anybody here to talk about this? Couple jumping out.
Hello, I'm Bethany Ricker. I am a employee for Northern Human Services, specifically the White Mountain Mental Health Office in Littleton.
Are you from Lancaster or Littleton?
Oh, I'm from Lancaster.
I am not. So my name is Ellen Beck. I am also an employee of White Mountain Mental Health, and I'm a resident of Whitefield, New Hampshire. So I would like to request permission to speak.
Does she have permission? All in favor? All opposed? Go ahead.
White Mountain Mental Health is Northern Human Services Community Health, Mental Health Center that serves Northern Grafton County and Lower Coas County. As the safety net provider of mental health services for these geographic areas, White Mountain Mental Health strives to ensure that everyone in the community, regardless of income or insurance status, has access to high-quality mental health services. These services include 24/7 emergency services, outpatient therapy for adults and children, psychiatric services for established clients, case management and functional support outreach services, as well as assertive community treatment services, supported employment services, a six-bed adult residential group home, and three supported short-term transitional beds available for clients in need of housing while awaiting stable, permanent, affordable housing. For those that are uninsured or underinsured, Northern Human Services offers a sliding fee scale as well as an affordable payment plan options, so necessary services are still accessible to individuals regardless of their ability to pay.
So to speak specifically to the town of Lancaster a little bit. In the fiscal year of 2024, 72 residents of Lancaster were served through White Mountain Mental Health on a regular basis. 31 residents accessed emergency services. Providing emergency services is arguably our most important service while also being the costliest as this is often not reimbursable for many commercial insurances. We ask every town that we serve for funding to not only help offset the cost of emergency services, but any service someone cannot afford to pay so no one who is experiencing an acute mental health emergency or is seeking treatment has to worry about the cost. We are grateful for your ongoing support, and we appreciate the support of this town in all you do, so we ask for that again.
Okay, do we have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 26? All opposed? Article 26 passes. Okay, Article 27, Adopt Local Tax Cap. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 32:5-B and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body of budget committee shall not submit a recommended budget that is higher than the prior fiscal year's actual amount of local taxes raised last year's base, adjusted for inflation? The increase for inflation, or CPI, Consumer Price Index, is the formula above, in the formula above, shall be an annual inflation index published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics as of January 1st. This is my petition. Three fess of vote. Do we have a motion on this? Got a motion, a second? Got a second up there? And who's here to talk about this?
Mr. Moderator, I'm getting up and I'm speaking from out here because we have not taken a position as a select board on this. But I see several issues with passing this cap. The number-one issue is it sets the date as January 1st for the Consumer Price Index. We're well into our budgeting process by January 1st. We start our budgeting process in October. This would cripple us in getting our budget ready for town meeting. The other problem, I'm sitting here, while I went to do this, in the future, you have a board sitting here, and they look at this tax cap. They have a year where they could level fund, but they know in the future they're not going to be able to level fund. They're going to go to the maximum amount they can have for a budget. So the tax cap is going to become a 2% increase when they might have been able to do a no increase. Or if you have a year that you have 8% inflation like we had a couple of years ago, and they could do a 4% increase, they're not going to do that 4% increase. They're going to do an 8% increase. So I really think we need to rethink this. I understand the sentiment, and I'd love to say that we could do that, only do the... But each year, as we found out last June when we had the storm, we don't always know what we're going to face. So I would ask everyone to vote no on this.
Again, Rob Christie, 155 Mount Prospect Road, Lancaster. I'm part of the group that organized this petition. And Leon called it right when he described it as a sentiment. Budgeting has two phases. One is what you want to spend. And the second is what money you have to spend. And so this is, my God, this is a clumsy way to do this. Tax caps are difficult to work with. They're very controversial. But they give the taxpayer, who is the person who elects the budget committee, the opportunity to control and keep a lid on such expenditures as they think they can afford. Now, tax cap, one of the problems is it's complicated to understand. It says the prior year's budget plus the inflation rate, basically. Now, first of all, I'll refute what you say. If there's 8% inflation, I don't think any select board would just naturally spend extra money because they could. However, if they did, I hope what they would do would be to put that money into a capital reserve or some sort of fund because, as Mr. Biati has pointed out, we are behind the eight ball in putting money away for a lot of our problems. So the tax cap doesn't prevent or incite extra spending. The other thing that many people... The tax cap is complicated to understand, and in the case of this year's budget, you would take that dollar amount, but you get to take all of the amounts that came from unfunded balances and capital reserve funds and add them back into the total. The point is, it's not as crippling as you think. Its main purpose is to give a message that we need to have a ceiling that we start from as well as expenses. Again, I'm the first to admit that they're cumbersome. There are some in place in this state. There are more that are not in place. Sometimes they're defeated when they're proposed. But the idea is to start somewhere to compensate for what expenses have increased through no fault of anybody. In other words, the cost of money inflation has gone up. So that's the purpose of this thing. It's not to hamstring anybody. And the last thing about a tax cap is it's part of the budgeting process. And when you get to town meeting, like we are now, you're not bound by it. If there are special expenses, like our big wipeout with the rainstorm, you, the voters, can increase the amount. You could go beyond where the tax cap ceiling is. So it's not handcuffs. It's an effort to recognize that taxpayers have a limit to what they can spend as opposed to what the town may need, want, or think is a good idea for the future. So that's my effort to explain it, and I proposed it. But I think it's very important that everybody vote the way they think and take it from there. Am I recommending it? Well, sort of.
I guess somebody up top, it looks like.
Brad Griswold, 101 Mount Prospect Road.
Come a little closer to the microphone there.
Brad Griswold, 101 Mount Prospect Road, Lancaster. I think everybody in the room has a desire to be fiscally responsible and good stewards with our money. However, I think what's being proposed is a solution looking for a problem. When you put in an artificial structure like is being proposed as a CPI cap, basically what you're doing is hamstring the town. And I think Leon makes a good point. It is just human nature. If you have a 3% cap, they're going to spend the 3% cap because there could next year be the need, and they won't have it. So it's a compounding effect of 3% every year that we're building into the budget process. However, if you look at our budget in previous years, we've had years where our budget has been flat. You're basically taking away the ability of the people that we're electing to maintain fiscal responsibility with the town's money, the taxpayers' money. So if we want to have changes within our budget process, we'll vote different people onto the budget committee, vote different selectmen. But if you're voting for these people, then let them do their job. Put your trust in the people that you've elected. You have departments that are coming to them and saying, "This is what the needs are for us to serve the community." The budget committee is doing their very best to take that information and structure it into a coherent budget. And then they're going to the selectmen to say, "Does this work?" And there's another level of fiduciary responsibility occurring with the selectmen. We're the final arbitrators. But when we institute these artificial caps and structures, we're just increasing the level of bureaucracy, and we're not accomplishing anything in the process, in my opinion. So I would strongly recommend unnecessarily complicating a process that is already working, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments?
James, 16 Prospect Street. Just to follow on, Mr. Griswold said, I think he did it a whole lot more elegantly than I would have. I was going to start with, we're all Yankees, and we all love to save money. But the element he left out is our staff at the town and our manager. And these people have done an excellent job of saving money, doing their job day in and day out, and they don't get recognition for that. And to cap them or with something that's artificial and one year you can't give them the need is just, it's not, well, it's not good. It'll create poor morale in the town staff as well as, you know, be something that might not get done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rob? Last one.
Rob, again, 155 Mount Prospect Road. I just want to respond a little bit in that the city of Manchester, the city of Concord, the city of Dover, the city of Rochester, all have been operating with this system for many years and successfully. Also like to point out that the reason that this started in the first place was from observations of the budget committee, in which a number of members felt like it wasn't the individual proposals that they were worried about, it was the fact that the school district portion of our taxes is going way up this year. County is going up. The SWEAP program is not helping us at all. We can't do anything about any of those, but we can speak to our local budget. And the message is taxpayers feel a little bit squeezed lately, and so it's important that we don't just fly along with everything. I agree with Brad, it's cumbersome, and we don't want to stymie anybody, but there are two forces in a town. There's the legislative body, which is the voters, and there's the governing body, which is town management and the select board. The law deliberately sets them up in opposition, and this is just formalizing that opposition a little bit more.
Good, people are getting restless. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna do straight vote first, and if it's close, then I'll go back and count. So.
They left. They left. They left. The burners left. He doesn't have his five people in the lounge.
I mean, I think somebody left.
Are they all here?
They had to the bone.
You have something?
Yeah. So Eric Berger, 38 High Street. I move that we take a non-binding vote to see if the room wants to proceed this way.
I can't, bud, I got statutory, I gotta, I gotta follow this one. I know nobody wants to do it. I'm aware. All right, so, Alan, Joanne Savage, are they still here? Okay. Les Hilton? Les still here?
Yeah.
Where are you?
Up here.
Okay. Dean Blanchett, you still here?
Yeah.
Okay. And Rob Christie, we know you're here. Okay, so, got our five. Do we have ballots?
Yes.
Okay. Guys, you know the drill, so, come on down.
[inaudible]
I want to make sure you're voting for yes. If you vote yes, then you're favored with that. If you vote no, you say no you're not, okay?
[inaudible]
Mary Wamemaker, 87 Mount Prospect Road. I'd like to continue where she left off about the safety. I can name three specific times that I've felt danger. Last week, I was walking my dog coming up Mount Prospect.
Okay, folks, can have your attention. Luke? I know it's getting late, guys, but come on, all right. So, Article 27. The no votes were 99, the yes votes were 26, so Article 27 failed. All right. One more article to go. Article 28, road relocation. See if the town will vote to authorize a select board to execute and record all documents necessary, including any necessary deeds and plan to effectuate a lot line adjustment between tax map R-23 Lot 3 and tax map R-27 Lot 1, both at or near 56 Mount Prospect Road, to carry out the relocation of this portion of Mount Prospect Road with all costs, including but not limited to surveyors' fees, reporting fees, et cetera, to be borne by the property owner. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'll move Article 28.
I'll second.
And I'll speak to it. So, this project's been on the books since the 90s. I, uh, I kinda took this under my wing to, to reach out to the landowner and see if we could get it going, get it done, and it's, it's there. We just need approval from you to, to have the permission to swap, basically, land and relocate the loo, the road, and the property owner will bear all the cost, no cost to the town. So, any questions?
Will it go down the path of the hill? Near, 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 uh, Markette Longville?
No, this, this is, uh, Prospect Road. Go in Prospect Road towards East Whitefield Road.
Yeah.
It's right there where Mount Prospect comes out where the T is. It will be located down the hill toward...
Go to Davidge?
Davidge, yep, yep, yep.
Any other?
Hi, Vicki Gibbs, resident of Lancaster. Um, my understanding is the reason to move the road in this location is due to the blind spot caused by a row of trees.
Correct.
Um, I would like to ask what might be the cost of replanting the trees versus moving the road?